Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, April 24th. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so that we can pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the digital with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. So at this time, I'd like to announce that this is a public meeting. It's a public meeting that's being recorded, and it's being recorded by the Dartmouth Community Media. Our next scheduled public meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, we have an administrative matter. It's an amendment, and it's an SME application 24-2. It's requesting an 18-month extension for case number 2020-08. The petitioner slash applicant is attorney Mark DeChes. The owner of the property is Dartmouth Housing Authority. The representative is also Mr. DeChes, and he, the subject property is located at 1 Anderson Way, also known as MAP. I'm not sure if that's a correct MAP number, but it says 1754. It's either 17 or 54, and it's Lot 483. It's located within the general business district. So I don't know if you gentlemen remember this. This has come before us once, at least probably twice, initially for the actual request, and second for an extension, and there's a concern about the extension, and I'm going to read it into the record. It's MAP 177, just for clarification, lots 4. The petitioner is here, is seeking, actually, the petition was granted an extension to May 5th, 2024, because the petitioner was unable to substantially commence construction for financing reasons. Currently, the petitioner has had to reconfigure the plans for the project due to budgetary constraints. The petitioner has had to secure approval of its plans from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services, and has delayed the bidding process for the construction of the project. The petition is seeking to either amend its original application for a six-month extension to be an 18-month extension to substantially commence the progress of the project to and including May 5th, 2025, or in the alternative, grant an additional 12-month extension under this application for the petitioner to substantially commence construction. 760 CMR 56.0512C provides that a comprehensive permit may be extended by the local approving authority for good cause shown, and may not be unreasonably denied. Here, the petitioner states that the delay in securing funding from the Commonwealth, the effects of inflation and construction costs that have necessitated project redesigns. The petitioner requests that the substantial commencement date for construction on the Mendez Montero House to begin be extended to May 5th, 2025. All right, so that was a long convoluted way of saying that they need additional time. Now, I guess there are two ways that we can grant this as a board. We've already granted a six-month extension, so we can either grant an additional, we can amend it to become an 18-month extension, or we can just grant it as an outright 12-month extension so that it extends to May 5th, 2025. So to me, I don't see the difference in doing it one way or the other. Either is doing it as an extension to May 5th, 2025, or amending the prior extension that they had, unless you find that it'd be neater one way or the other, Attorney Human, but I'm indifferent. I don't know if you gentlemen-
What is the petitioner saying?
I think they called out pleading in the alternative.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Attorney Mark DeChes, representing the petitioner. Tonight, I have Connie Desbines, who was the executive director of the Dartmouth Housing Authority, who five years ago conceived of this project, and Mike Gagne, who is the president of Partners in Housing, which is securing the funding of the Mendez Montero House. We were granted a special permit which expired in November of last year. When I was last before you, I asked for a six-month extension. I did make a bit of a misstatement when I was before the board. I was told that we were on, we were advancing towards construction, and I advised the board that construction was going to begin in February. The next morning, after I talked to Connie, she said, "Yeah, we're hoping to get all the bid packages out by February." I immediately called Michelle and submitted a letter to clarify that I misconstrued progressing towards construction without actually bidding the project. There has, there was a funding delay, and the funding delay from the state was because of COVID. Everything closed down. We missed a couple of funding rounds. We secured financing, but in that time, Connie and Mike will tell you that the costs of this project have gone up about 45% from what was a $2.8 million project to $4.1 million. Connie can amplify, but yesterday, we did open our subcontracting bids for the, for the project, and the general contractor is coming up in-
May 1st at 2:00.
May 1st at 2:00. We will know at that time, after our consultants, the architects, and others look at it, whether we actually will have a project that will be going forward, or we'll have to abandon, abandon the project. That's where we are right now, the-
We, quite frankly, we quite understand what you put in here, and we're okay with granting the extension. It's just, we're just considering whether or not you felt it would be most appropriate to handle it where there would be sort of a, and as you indicated, pleading in the alternative. Of the two, do you think that there was one that would be much more, would be much more or more preferential than the other?
I know recently, the board granted with respect to the Vavonic property on Route 6, and an 18-month extension. I, I think if you amended the original extension to extend it to, amended to 18 months to expire on March 5th, 2005-
I think you put May 5th, 2005.
May 5th.
Okay. So if you think that that would be best, and I would have no problem with that. I don't know if any of the members would.
No, I have no problem with that.
Okay. All right. Do you think we need to hear anything else from the petitioner at this point in time?
No.
This is a 40B project, right?
Right, exactly.
It's not, and I think what happened was, we have a usually a standing, well, actually, a statute that says we could only grant the six months on the conventional variance, or a special permit. But here, this is a 40B, and there's different state regulations that deal with it. All right, so is there anyone in the audience? It's actually an administrative matter, so I don't know if I even need to take any comments. So at this point, I would entertain a motion if you guys want to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a 18-months extension on, just looking for the project name here now, on case number 2020-8 to, what is it, 5525 that we're going to go?
That's correct.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice have it.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Those numbers can be quite frightening of how expensive things have gotten.
40%?
Good luck.
By this time-
I didn't recognize you.
I figured you knew. You're getting worse than me.
It's time, next year it'll go up some more.
Alan, this is for you.
There you go. Oh, thank you.
All right, so moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, and it's special permit ZSP 24-4. The applicant in this case is David DeMello Jr. I believe we may have partial, I don't even know if we read it into the record, but I know that I had recused myself at the last hearing date because of the conflict that I have. I know Mr. DeMello, I've represented him in the past, and it's a situation where we didn't have a quorum, so the matter was continued to tonight. We do have a quorum, and I will be stepping down, and I believe Alan will be serving and acting as the chairman for tonight's hearing.
That's correct.
All right, and one-
If there wasn't a quorum at the prior hearing, shouldn't we start from the beginning?
We are going to start from the beginning.
No, you opened up the hearing.
I did open it up, okay.
We had enough people to open it?
Yeah, you can open it.
Yeah, I think I opened it, but we didn't take any public comment or anything.
No, 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 no.
Yes, and I let you start, you can start anew, okay? I actually asked that you started anew, just to ensure that there are no issues, all right? So at this point in time, I'll just step away, and then I'll be coming back for the administrative portion of tonight's hearing.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. All right, do I need to change my seat?
You don't have to, just change your other, just-
I just need my little-
I just want this in front of you.
Oh, I'm now on the chair?
Yeah.
Look at that. Opening.
You're not really opening.
No. No, no, I am. I'm going to start from the beginning. Michael, for first thing. We'll do the whole, I don't know. Okay. Recession for two minutes, please. Good evening. This next hearing is special permit ZSP-24-4. The petitioner applicant is David DeMello Jr. The owner of the property is David DeMello Sr. The subject property is 74 Lucy Little Road, MAP 42 Lot 27-7. The district is a single residence B district. The public hearing was advertised in the Chronicle? Dartmouth Weekly on March 21st and March 28th, 2024. Abutters were notified. Can I have a motion to-
Motion to approve the, waive the reading of the abutters list.
Second the motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The building commissioner issued a denial, which I will now read into the record. Letter dated March 5th, 2024, to David DeMello Sr. at 74 Lucy Little Road, Dartmouth. "I have reviewed your application. At this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant is proposing a common driveway serving five single-family residences. This does not meet the Town of Dartmouth zoning bylaws and will require a special permit granted by the ZBA. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw. 375-8.4G (6). Common driveways are allowed, are allowed serving as access to two or more single-family houses or two or more residential units, but not more than four single-family houses or four residential units. Common driveways shall be at least 16 feet wide and be located in a driveway easement at least 20 foot wide. The subject property is located in a single residence B district." There are a number of the town departments that have commented on this project. The planning board writes, "The planning, development, and board have been working with the property owner, abutting property owners, DPW, and DPW to address the best access arrangement for all involved. Planning supports this application." DPW writes, "DPW does not have any objection to 74 Lucy Little Road accessing their property through the common driveway rather than obstructing, constructing, constructing a second curb cut within 30 feet of the common driveway. The project description stated that the common driveway was already constructed. There is no ROW permit on file to construct the apron of common driveway with the public right-of-way. DPW does not have an approved construction plan on file of the approved common driveway. We recommend a 20-foot-long HMA driveway apron constructed to DPW specifications to access Lucy Little Road, which is consistent with any common driveway construction." Conservation Commission writes, "There are no conservation issues associated with the requested driveway easement extension." Now, if the petitioner would come forward and make their presentation.
Hi, I'm David DeMello Jr., representing my dad, David DeMello Sr., 74 Lucy Little. Pretty much just what you stated. I guess the common driveway, they only allowed four driveways off it, and we're looking for that special permit so that we're not creating a curb cut within that 30 feet for where the proposed driveway for his house was. Obviously, it's a little dangerous coming around the bend and with cars coming in and out. It doesn't really make sense construction-wise, so we were just looking to see if we could get that special permit to create their driveway to come off of that common driveway.
I guess, I'm, I'm a little confused with the DPW saying that the cut that's there was not approved? Or am I misreading?
That common driveway, we're not the owners of the common driveway, so we didn't construct it. We're just, we built a lot that comes off of Lucy Little, so it wasn't designed. That owner still has four more lots that are coming off of that. So we weren't the ones who constructed it or own that. I've been working with the DPW, we know the owner, and I guess they want the apron 20 feet paved and all that, so we're trying to work with them to try to solve that and see if he can get it done. But we weren't the ones paid or owner of that common driveway. We're just seeking a special permit to come off of it now, so that we don't have that second driveway built right on the, right off of it, adjacent to it.
Okay. Any of the members have any questions?
Yes, please. Have you been with the police department or health department to see if the, the road is large enough? I mean, wide enough for all the, say, anything that they have to drive to the site when they're called? Whether it will be police station call, whether it would be ambulance, or whatever it is?
We haven't been to the police station or fire to check that. I know the common driveway, the width of it, I believe, is like 20 or 22 feet wide. It's obviously a private-
20 feet wide?
20 feet wide. It's a private way. It's not a public road or anything, it's just a common dirt driveway like others in the neighborhood. But if I have to check in with the police or fire, we can do that, and I can talk to the, the owner of the common driveway. But it's plenty wide to get fire trucks, construction vehicles, cement trucks, everything's back there, so. There are actually people starting to build homes back there too, so.
Thank you.
Shouldn't the owner of the easement or the private way be here to, to address this as well? I mean, these gentlemen are here with really no financial interest in this, and they're looking for permission to, to improve it and extend it. It would seem to me that the owner of that should be here at the same time. Maybe I'm wrong, it's just a question.
Yeah, on that, I'm not too sure about that. I know that the owner who initially-
That could put you in a difficult situation.
Yeah, so when they built it, obviously, the owner, when he built that, he hadn't sold off the lots. He pretty much had a giant section of the land that was not subdivided or anything. Since then, he's sold the lots, so three of them are sold, and I don't know who is responsible for everything now, but-
How long has that private way been in there?
Probably, I can get the exact, I don't know off the top of my head, but roughly-
I didn't hear what he said.
Roughly three years.
Three years?
Yeah. So as far as anything on file, I wouldn't know that because it wasn't myself responsible for that. It was the owner who sold the lots. We're just seeking, now that it's in place, to possibly get a driveway off of it, knowing that those were the bylaws and the zoning bylaws.
What do you think, Alan?
I think that's an issue. I wasn't aware of that.
Legally, they have no, no right to-
You don't own the private way?
We were not, we were not the owners. My father, who I'm representing, he bought a house, it's, his address is off of Lucy Little. It's not off that common driveway.
Is that, is that the lot, you've, this, you presented this plan to the board, right?
Yep.
And there's a lot there that says David DeMello Sr.
Yep, he owns it, he owns another lot in the back, there's two lots, yep.
And he owns a lot behind it?
Yep, correct.
And so that right now, there, I don't know this, but is there an easement?
There is an easement, yes, that's what the common driveway, that easement is there, yep.
Okay.
It services those four lots, one of which isn't his anymore, he sold it to my sister, so. But there is four lots off of it, that's why we would be the fifth one, seeking it.
It doesn't say there's an easement here.
What do you see? Can't leave it.
Access easement, right here.
Yeah, but we don't know who owns it, that's the issue.
Do you know who issued the easement?
Who issued the easement? I don't know, no. I know who created it, was the owner who sold us the lots, who sold the land.
As, as I look at your plan, there, the, the road, the driveway, seems to go by your father's property, then it keeps going south. I'll have to look at that. The diagram doesn't say who owns that part of the easement, if there is one.
It should be an easement, because the, the guy who sold it to us put that in, so, and got approval for those lots back there, so there should be something regarding that. The DP, referencing with the DPW, I think they like having the first 20 feet of those easements paved, so. Said we can get that done and help the owner with it.
If I may, just by means of clarification, a state lot 1C has its frontage on Lucy Little Road. Do you see that? Lot 1C is the furthest one to the south, well, actually, to the west. You see a state lot 1C?
I do.
All right. So if there's an easement agreement, the easement agreement lies on, they're the servient tenant of the easement, a state lot 1C, they have their frontage, they have the frontage on Lucy Little Road, and the area that would be utilized by Mr. DeMello would be over Lot 1C. Do you see it?
All right, so these lots that are shown on this plan, they're not on record yet?
Oh, they should be, they've been sold, so.
I believe they are on record. If you look at a state lot 1B, 1B has frontage way down here, see the frontage back here?
East on Lucy Little.
If you look at the map here, Attorney Human? A state lot 1B, their frontage is here.
Oh, I see what they did, okay.
All right, and if you look at 1A, you see the other frontage, there's frontage there on Lucy Little Road as well. And then you look at the other one that's MAP 4227-1, now formerly of David DeMello Sr. and Sedalia DeMello. That one has frontage along, that guy has his frontage on Lucy Little Road as well.
200 feet of frontage, yep.
My two lots, they have frontage of 200 feet each one.
But as far as the easement is concerned, Lot 1B comes down and is separated from the other-
It's all the land.
So-
But he doesn't own the easement.
Well, he has, he owns the easement, he owns the easement at least through his property, and then he owns the rest of the land, so he can create his own easement. As I look at this, David DeMello Sr. has the driveway easement that fronts his property off of Lucy Little, and then it looks like, if I'm looking at this correctly, the driveway then goes into his land, into your dad's land.
When it makes the bend.
When it reaches, when it goes past the bend, and then it bends again, second time. And that, that goes into land that your dad owns right now, or has sold to somebody else?
Sold it to my sister, just recently.
Okay.
Like within, you're talking within the weeks.
Just so I understand, what was your purpose in going before the planning board?
They were just, going in front of us was because they told us, obviously, the easement or the common driveway could only service the four lots, so we needed to get some type of special permit to gain access off of that, that easement, instead of having our driveway come adjacent to the, with a new curb cut. That's what the, that's what we went for, that's what we were told to do, was to have that.
And then the planning board said, "No, you got to go to the zoning board." Is that what happened?
I believe so, yeah.
Why don't they say this law has to go to the-
All right, okay.
We were only doing it as we were directed?
Oh, I misunderstood then, okay, the planning, all right. Okay, you just spoke to the planning director, is that what you did?
Yes.
And you described your plan to him?
Yes, sir.
Her, sorry. Okay. I, I don't have a problem with this. You have a right to, to have that driveway serve four lots, and you're planning on using estate lots, so, and you're looking for just one additional lot under the terms of our zoning. I don't really have a problem with that, but one of the, the issue you heard us describe, you got to make sure you have the proper easements authority to access those lots. And looking at this plan, the beginning of it runs across your dad's property, the beginning of the driveway, so I, I'm assuming his deed has an easement, so he could access his own property. And then the rest of it goes into your father's land, so you could create your own easements to these properties, which may have already been done, but I don't know that.
No, we haven't, no.
All right. So how does your sister access her lot?
Her lot comes right off of this common driveway, this easement, and then the last bit of it hooks into her property. The last, last bit of that little road, that, that design there.
So, all right. Your, your dad's easement goes all the way up to the beginning of Lot 1A, and then crosses 1A?
It's tough for me to see it without, without looking at it, but if I can come.
So her property is here, and the easement-
Oh, this is hers here?
This is her property.
All right.
This is my father's, who we're speaking about.
Yep.
This is her property, and the easement actually ends at her property. And then these people here, she, so he has his 200 feet of frontage, she has his own, hers is own for the 200 feet, and then the two, the other lot, the last one, is an estate lot. So technically, this little piece of land is this owner, but the easement comes to, actually, to her land. She has access directly to her property, and the reason so, when we read the bylaws, we saw that we could only have five off of this, so we're seeking to have a driveway off of that and not be where it was existing, another curb cut off the main road right around the bend.
So no curb cut here, no curb cut here, no curb cut here.
No, because his driveway on the proposal would have to be right there, and it's, I believe, 30 feet or less than what the common driveway, so those four people would be coming out, as well as him trying to get out.
Safety-wise, we didn't, we, construction backgrounds, we were like, it didn't make sense, so we thought, we thought we'd bring it up to someone and all.
and all that. Anything else?
I'm good.
Anything else, Doc?
Yes, I mentioned what I was...
I have put together some proposed findings, if I can find them. Here we go. I'm suggesting the following findings. If you have any additions, corrections, or changes, just let me know. Number one, the subject property is located at, oh, let me stop there. Is there anybody, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? Seeing no one, then we can proceed to the findings and conclusions, conditions. Again, back to the findings. The subject property is located at 74 Lucy Little Road, Dartmouth, and is also known as Town of Dartmouth Assessor's map 42 lot 27-7. Number two, the subject property is located in a single residence B zoning district and has been owned by the petitioner since 2021. Number three, petitioner is proposing a common driveway serving five, and I put this in, estate lots for single-family residences. Number four, petitioner seeks relief from Article 8, comma, Section 375-8.4G6, wherein it states, "Common driveways are allowed serving as access to two or more single-family houses or two or more residential units, but not more than four single-family houses or four residential units. Common driveways shall be at least 16 feet wide and be located in a driveway easement 20 feet wide." Number five, the board finds that the subject property does have access to a public way, Lucy Little Road. However, constructing a driveway to access the premises would require an additional curb cut within 30 feet of the existing common driveway. Number six, the board finds that, given the unique facts of this case, granting a special permit for the common driveway to serve five residences is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaws. Gentlemen, anything to add? Any changes?
No, I think that's good.
On a comment that you made, I don't believe all these lots are estate lots.
Oh.
And the second thing, I'm just questioning the fact that on paragraph three, the petitioner is proposing a common driveway, I don't think he's proposing anything. The common driveway already exists. I don't know if that matters any, but he's just proposing to, to have his driveway off the common, as I see it, off the common driveway.
Yeah, and they're all not estate lots. I believe out of the five there, there might be one estate lot, one or two. The other three have the 200 feet of frontage.
All right. I have now changed number five to petitioner proposes to use a common driveway serving five single-family residences. So, that, I think that addresses the issue. Okay. May I have a motion to approve or whatever the special permit?
I make a motion that we approve case number ZSP-24-24.
One second, Paul, I gotta add the conditions to it. The board's approval shall be specifically conditioned upon compliance with the following. Number one, the petitioner and or subsequent owner will secure all the necessary permits and approvals from all applicable boards and agencies prior to the issue of a building permit. The petitioner must comply with the DPW specifications for a 20-foot HMA driveway apron, 20-foot long, I guess it is. All restrictions and conditions imposed upon, imposed from any prior variances issued for this property shall remain in full force and effect and must be adhered to by the owner. And there are plans on record that will become part of the record. Okay.
Let me start over again.
We need a motion to close the public hearing first.
I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve the special permit?
Motion to approve the special permit ZSP-24-4, with all terms and standard conditions to apply.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Good night.
Short recess, please.
We're back on the record. Moving along to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting, we have review and approval of minutes of December 20th, 2023 for use variance ZAV 23-6 for 481 Fons Connor Road. Any comments, gentlemen?
I have none.
I have none.
Attorney Farrier?
None.
I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 20th, ZAV 23-6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Next is review.
Do I have also to announce that I recused myself?
On which cases, Doctor? On both of these? You're not voting on them, because you're...
I'm not voting, but...
But you want to re-announce? We don't usually do that as part of the administrative portion of approving a minute.
No, fine.
All right, because there's no decisions to be made at this point, other than the remove, approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Review and approval of minutes of January 17th, 2024, use variance ZAV 23-6 for the same property, 481 Fons Connor Road. Any comments?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
I don't either. Attorney Farrier?
None.
All right, gentlemen.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 17th, 2024, number ZAV 23-6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of minutes of January 24th, 2024, use variance ZAV 23-6 for the same property, 41 Fons Connor Road. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comment.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 24th, 2024, ZAV 23-6.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of administrative minutes of March 13th, 2024. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments either.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of hearing on March 13th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to review and approval of minutes of March 13th, 2024, ZAV case 23-16 for 16 Brant Avenue. I have no, no comments.
I have nothing to add.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen?
Make a motion that we approve the meetings, the minutes for March 13th, 2024, ZAV 23-16.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to the last administrative matter that we have, which is a review and approval of minutes of March 13th, 2024, for ZAV case 24-2, 96 Bryant Street. I have no comments, gentlemen.
I have nothing to add to that.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve the, the minutes for variance on March 13th, 2024, number ZAV 24-2.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So, that pretty much wraps up everything that we have in the agenda. Is there anything else that anybody would like to raise that's not on the agenda for this evening? There being nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Aye, aye, aye.